Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is 7:30 PM on September 13th, 2023. Time for our first regular meeting of September. At this time, Mr. Hawk will offer an invocation, and Ms. Hernandez will lead us into pledge. If you're able and you can stand, please do so.
Heavenly Father, this evening I thank you for your creation. I thank you for life. I thank you, Father, for this good city that we live in. I thank you that we have the freedom to participate in each of our affairs, and I thank you for the spot I'm in, and I thank you for everyone that's here that's able to participate in what's going on around them. I pray that you would go with us tonight, help us to make good decisions, and do your will. Let me ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That was quite a pledge. You've got a lot of support here tonight.
Yeah.
It's good. Uh, roll call.
Johnson.
Here.
Shilts.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
We have the minutes from our regular meeting on August 23rd, 2023. Anybody see any changes that need to be made? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the regular meeting on 8/23.
Second.
And roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shilts.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Any communication, Mr. Denon?
Everybody was given a thank you letter from the Humane Society.
I assume everybody saw that. If you didn't, you can get them out. Okay, reports of council committees, economic strategies, and cooperation. Kendra, you're up to bat.
Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the City Council Chambers of 105 North Main Street on Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023 at 5:00 PM. I presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Ted Hawk, council member, Mr. Steve Shilts, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mrs. Chelsea Baker, Economic Development Director, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, Mr. Joseph Dunin, city manager, Mr. Sean Remington, and Mrs. Rochelle Trevs. I never can Trevs.
Trevs.
Trevs, okay. Which are citizens. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with the industrial development. The administration advised the committee that Project Crane was progressing. Number two, the committee noted that Value Tech had expanded the product line that would increase their staff by 20 jobs. Number three, the committee noted the status of various development projects within the downtown area. The administration noted the new business Always August Boutique had opened in the downtown area. Number four, the committee benefited from a review regarding downtown events. Number five, the committee noted that Game On had sold to a local owner and would remain in operation under a different name. Number six, the committee noted the interest in the Harry Anniston murals. Number seven, the committee reviewed progress with commercial development. The administration advised the committee that construction was progressing with two new car washes. Number eight, the committee benefited from a review of trail connections. Number nine, the committee noted that a new color chart had been submitted to the Historic Review District Board for review. Respectfully submitted myself and Mr. Joe Denon, recording secretary.
I believe I was at that meeting, but when we have the recording secretary being Mr. Denon, I understand why there's mistakes being made. But I was at that meeting.
So, uh, in your name.
Anything else that we need to change? Do we have a motion to accept? I'm going to move. Second, the two Jims.
Mm-hmm.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shilts.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. And we have finance and personnel. Mr. Blair, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance and Personnel Meeting, August 23rd, 2023. The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the City Council Chambers of 105 North Main Street on Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Mr. Jim Blair presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Ted Hawk, council member, Mr. Steve Shilts, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mrs. Christina Collins, Finance Director, Mr. Joseph Dunin, city manager, Mr. Sean Remington, and Rochelle Trevs, citizens. First, the committee benefited from a report of the statement of cash for the month ending July 31st, 2023. The committee benefited from a report on the investments of the City of Washington Courthouse. Mrs. Collins noted that the financial audit had begun in the first week of August. Mrs. Collins advised that the audit progressed well. Mrs. Collins advised the committee that the reconciliation process was progressing. The administration advised the committee of a request from the Fayette County Humane Society regarding financial assistance not to exceed $10,000. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with the request on a reimbursement basis. Committee recommended that legislation be brought to council authorizing the necessary tax levies for the year 2023. The administration advised the committee of the need to replace an inoperable tanker at the Fire Department. The committee recommended that legislation be brought to council for the administration to purchase a new tanker from Johnson's Emergency Vehicle Solutions not to exceed $1,183,000. The committee recommended that financing options be reviewed. The committee benefited from a report on personnel issues given by Mr. Denon. The administration advised the committee of multiple internal transfers within the Service Department. The committee noted that the new patrol officers at the Police Department were doing well. The committee was advised that Mr. Lidle was temporarily assigned to the water plant and that Mr. Pettiford and Mr. Zegulender were attending the Police Academy. The committee noted that the new firefighters at the Fire Department had progressed in the training process. The administration noted that an employee had been released during their probationary period. And finally, the committee benefited from a report of the Human Resource Department. Respectfully submitted myself and Mr. Joe Denon recorded the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Any corrections, questions?
I have a question on number five. It says that the committee recommended that the administration proceed with the request. This was for the $10,000 on a reimbursement basis. Are we expecting that money back?
No. I, what that's trying to say is that they have to produce a receipt. Like they've gone out and purchased building materials, and then they, they get a check from us.
Okay.
Up to $10,000.
I was going to ask the same question. Thank you, Ted.
Any other question? Someone want to make a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shilts.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. Denon, your report, please.
Thank you. Oh, just a reminder, this evening actually we'll start blocking off streets for the Scarecrow Festival. Uh, the Ride Company, the second year that we've had them, we're very pleased with them, but they do come a little bit earlier and set up a little bit earlier. They do a tremendous amount of, uh, testing with the equipment, and we're very happy about that. So we're happy to re, to accommodate that. But that does mean that you will have the typical scarecrow traffic pattern that you're accustomed to in the past. Uh, would also like to thank Kelly and Mika Rhodes for all of the tremendous work that they've done along with a whole lot of other people. The Street Department, its service has also been exceptional and will be exceptional. The Police Department will also have a very long weekend. We will be out there all weekend making sure that things go the way that they should. There'll always be a few little hiccups and problems, but we adapt and overcome. Uh, but hopefully, we have a very fun weekend. The weather looks great, very cooperative. We might only have a little bit of rain on Sunday, but it does look like it's going to be in the evening now. So we are looking forward to having a great deal of fun at a very safe and clean festival. Uh, new legislation, you have several abatement pieces of legislation, 1107 East Paint Street, 1231 Washington Avenue, and 817 Lakeview. You also have a resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies. That piece of legislation concerns property taxes, of which the City of Washington Courthouse has no voted levies. It does benefit in part from inside millage. Now, if you look at your tax bill, uh, it has a nice little pie chart, and they've improved the printing on it. It's actually readable now. You can actually see where that money goes, and I think if you look up online, it tells you also. And the portion that goes to the City of Washington Courthouse of your property taxes, you will find is surprisingly very small. Uh, then there is the legislation concerning the tanker truck. And then we have a resolution that basically says that we can apply to the Ohio Public Works Commission for the market street improvements that we talked about in committee. So that is us going out and applying for money to help with that, uh, rather expensive street improvement. But the goal is there that that ends up with a nice, lovely, smooth street that looks very much like what we've done to, oh, Court Street recently. Uh, so that is part of the process of that. Coming up on the 21st, you'll also have a little bit of inconvenience, but the long-term benefit is very good. Court Street is now wonderful. It looks nice. It's great to drive on, but we'll be making improvements to that railroad crossing on Court so that you have the same experience when you go over the railroad crossing. Uh, and the way that we are doing that is, uh, the new and improved way to do that, the, you end up with concrete railroad ties, so that should be, uh, something that stays smoother for quite some time. Uh, and the hope is there that you have a nice, long-term improvement there. This evening, you've noticed the projector. You get the wonders of the PowerPoint projection. And I'm sure that you're all excited about that. It's September, uh, which means that I've looked at some of the census information. We're going to talk about that. It looks at Washington Courthouse and several other surrounding communities. It's not meant to be a comparison. You want to look at some information about Washington Courthouse and how the region as a whole is doing. And when we're done, if you want them, there are nice hard copies that are a little bit easier for you to look at, uh, and have a discussion about. There are, there is one statistic in there that I have a little bit of skepticism about. We'll talk about that. But that is what we will do now unless you have any other questions about the normal report.
I just mentioned, Mr. Denon, when they do the railroad crossing, it will shut down Court Street. You might want to start thinking about how to get around.
Yeah, five to six days.
It won't be easy.
No, but that ought to be something that we don't have to do for a very long time. If it's not, we will never do it this way again because it's more expensive than the traditional way to deal with it. But it should, without anything to rot in there, it should be a nice, long-term way to go about that. So we're going to do the PowerPoint presentation now. And if we get things together.
Wherever Terry sits, he has to move.
The information is from the Census Bureau, and it's the Quick Facts function. I use that because it makes it easier to look at more than one community. And the first thing we're going to look at is the July 1, 2022 population estimate. Remember, you have the census itself on a decennial basis, and each year they produce a population estimate. And the communities in the region that we look at are Chillicothe, Washington Courthouse, Circleville, Wilmington, and Hillsborough, just because of their proximity. Now, the smallest of those is Hillsborough. Then you get significantly larger, almost twice the size of Wilmington, a bit larger in Circleville, then Washington Courthouse, and Chillicothe. We're going to talk a little bit about also, uh, the geography of those communities. Hillsborough kind of surprises you that it's that small because it seems bigger, and we'll talk about why in a little bit. The one thing that I'm a little bit skeptical of is the 14,399 population number in their estimate. I would think that that would actually be a little bit more. Now, historically, we've always done better than the estimate when it comes to the actual census. That's the population estimate by county, and you have Fayette, 28,000, almost 29. Clinton, significantly larger. Highland is also larger. Pickaway, there's a huge difference. And by the time you get to Ross County, it's a tremendous difference. That's why Hillsborough feels bigger than it is because it's in just a larger county. So you have a larger population base around it. And that also holds true to geographic size. Fayette and Clinton, Clinton County are about the same physical size in terms of square miles. You get larger in Pickaway. Highland County, you get larger. And Ross County, compared to Fayette County, is huge. The percent female, notice that it's highest in Hillsborough. And when we get to the population by age, remember that. And the basic fact that, that females tend to live longer than males. The younger the population is, the closer to it being evenly split. Percent of population, five years or younger. And those are all relatively close. It gets a little bit higher in Circleville. Washington Courthouse is at 7, but basically you're, you're between 6 and almost 8%. Population 18 years or younger, notice how much higher that is here. And that's held true for quite a while. You have about a quarter of the population 18 years or younger. Hillsborough has the, the smallest. And in the next slide, that'll become a little bit more apparent as we walk. But in terms of workforce, that's, uh, the, the number there, I've always liked that. And it's actually edged up from when we did this the last time. It was at 24 and change, and now we're at 25. Percent of the population 65 years and older, that's the July 1, 2022 estimate. Hillsborough is the highest. Okay. And remember the percent female? That's 65 years or older up there now. Wilmington, uh, Washington Courthouse, relatively similar. Circleville's a little bit higher, and Chillicothe is a little bit higher. Sometimes people, you know, kind of the backyard, you, you get used to, you're used to thinking that everybody around you is old people. And in Washington Courthouse, that is significantly not the case. I want to clarify that we value people of whatever age that they are, but the characterization of it as an aging community is not correct. The number of households, that tracks logically along with population. Chillicothe is the largest, then Washington Courthouse, then behind that Circleville, but very similar to Washington Courthouse. Wilmington and Hillsborough would be smaller. Persons per household, uh, a little bit unusual that we're a little bit higher there, but the, the level of variance between the communities is not that large.
It's young kids that are not leaving home.
Owner occupied housing rate. Chillicothe, it's the highest, followed by Washington Courthouse, then interestingly Wilmington, Circleville, and Hillsborough. Living in same house one year ago, persons age one or older, fairly stable population, very similar in Washington Courthouse and Chillicothe, then Hillsborough, followed by Wilmington and Circleville. Next slide is, we're going to talk about median income. And that's a measurement, uh, that tells you the point at which half the households have income above that level and approximately half have it below that level. It's highest in Washington Courthouse, followed by Circleville, then Chillicothe, Wilmington, and Hillsborough. We've never been highest before. We've been in second place before. And, oh, 20 years ago, I started doing that. That was a radically different story. Now, you can measure that in different ways. Next thing we're going to look at, per capita income, which is simply, uh, taking the measure of all sorts of income and dividing it by the total population, in which case it's highest in Chillicothe, followed by Washington Courthouse, Wilmington, Circleville, and Hillsborough. Persons in poverty percentage, uh, let's see. The highest you have is Wilmington, uh, followed by Washi, I'm sorry. It's Hillsborough. With an older population, that tends to make sense when you think about their median and their per capita income. Circleville, Wilmington, and Washington Courthouse, it's almost identical, and then it's lowest in Chillicothe. What's very interesting though is the next slide. And it's stayed pretty consistently this way. Persons without health insurance under the age of 65. We've been lowest there consistently for a while, which you would think that that would track almost identically with the slide before it. But that is what is, you're looking at there. Percent of households with a broadband internet subscription. Wilmington highest with the college there. That doesn't surprise me. Then Chillicothe, Washington Courthouse, relatively close. Circleville and Hillsborough. At the other end of the spectrum. Households with a computer, uh, they're all relatively close with maybe the exception of Hillsborough a little bit. But in Wilmington, Washington Courthouse, and Chillicothe, that's almost identical. A little bit less than Circleville, and a bit less, those are a bit less than Hillsborough. Percent of population 16-plus years in the civilian labor force, it has been consistently the highest in Washington Courthouse. So, quite honestly, sometimes I get a little bit angry. Once in a while, you'll hear an argument that, you know, nobody goes to work anymore. A significant part of the population in Washington Courthouse gets up and it goes to work. Percent of the female population 16-plus years in civilian labor force. I was interested to see if that explained something about the little household size issue earlier. And quite honestly, it doesn't pay a whole lot of anything. It's a little bit higher in Wilmington, but logically, it's close to 50% in most places. Total retail sales. Now, this is interesting because remember how small Hillsborough is? But how high the number of retail sales are? It's because of how large Highland County is. And think about the road network. And if you were on the southern half of Highland County and you wanted to go to east-west, you can do that, but not particularly easily. So you get directed to the, the center of the county. Logically, Chillicothe is the largest. So you're going to have the largest number there. Washington Courthouse, second place makes sense. Wilmington, Circleville is a bit, you would think it would be larger, but that population is increasingly in the orbit of suburban Columbus. That's retail sales per capita if we do it by population, which would indicate that we can make some progress there in terms of retail outlets. Hillsborough, very small but very high number because you got a higher, compared to the population, your number of establishments. Total accommodation and food service sales. Makes sense that Chillicothe is the largest. See how high Wilmington is? With a population only a little bit smaller than us, the best explanation I can have of that is that it's the college. Then you have Washington Courthouse, Hillsborough with sort of captive population around it, and then Circleville, where they've got more options to move around, really. This is one slide where we don't look very good. And we won't look very good in the other one either, than one that comes after this. High school graduate or higher persons 25 years or older. Chillicothe, it's the highest, then Wilmington, and then Washington Courthouse, Hillsborough, and, I'm sorry. I got out of.
Circleville.
Circleville. That is one thing where honestly, we can and should improve upon. Bachelor's degree or higher, percent persons 25 years or older, highest in Chillicothe. Interestingly, Circleville, Washington Courthouse is about the same. Hillsborough, close to that number. And you do have the presence of the community college there. Logically, you would think that this number would look better in Wilmington, but a lot of the students there aren't necessarily from Wilmington. This slide tells you in a very complicated way, that none of those communities are particularly diverse. There is one slight mistake, African-American or black, and Hillsborough is four and a half percent and not five percent, but the Excel spreadsheet insisted on always changing it to five percent. And when I was trying to fix that, Kelly had a lot of scarecrow questions. So it ended up just staying at five percent. Oddly enough, the home at Tecumseh, Chillicothe, reports no American Indian or Alaska native. But if you go down to Hillsborough, you will find some people identifying that as their race. Now, Hillsborough has always had that, that's not new. The Asian numbers have changed a little bit over time. Hispanic Latinos changed a little bit over time. But most of that has stayed relatively stable across the years as we've looked at that. But basically, they're, they're not particularly, none of the communities are particularly what you would call diverse. Language other than English spoken at home, it's always been highest in Wilmington. It's varied a little bit in Washington Courthouse and Circleville over the years. Foreign-born persons. Always been highest in Wilmington, and Washington Courthouse, and. Circleville, that has crept up and down a little bit over the years. Population per square mile. It's densest in Chillicothe, which makes sense, because you have more people down there. Circleville, Washington Courthouse, Hillsborough, and then Wilmington. Now, the one thing with a smaller community, all of them have the opportunity to annex property around them. So that if, the next time that they update this calculation, with some of the annexations that you've done. You'll change that number rather radically, without changing the experience of most of the people in the community. Now, has the newly annexed areas developed over time, that would alleviate the difference, but that takes place over a relatively long time period. And that is the end of the show. And we'll get the lights on, so you can see it. If you've got hard copies, that you can take a look at. And anybody's welcome to those. You can get a little bit of census information yourselves. The median income number, like that a lot. Per capita, we've headed in the correct direction for a while. And honestly. You want everybody to be doing well. Because you don't wanna be shackled to someone by the facts of geography that has significant issues. But that is this year's look at the particular piece of information. You have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
You put a lot of time into that, it looks like.
Actually, with Quick Facts, it's easy to look at.
Quick Facts.
Because it sets everything out in a table. And you can pick out the communities, and it lines them all up, and the, the tables correspond amongst many and other, and it's totally easy.
Interesting facts.
The only thing that irritating is, when I put that into the PowerPoint is. My ability to stare at the screen for that long becomes kind of questionable.
Okay, any other questions? We'll move on. Mrs. Collins, do you have anything for tonight? Okay, Mr. Pitstick, do you?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a few people who wish to speak to council tonight. We definitely wanna hear what you have to say, but I'm gonna ask that you keep your comments brief if possible, and to the point. Because we have several things on the agenda. Mr. Remington, you're signed up first.
I told her that she lost her kids, that she could speak first.
Oh. Yeah, sure. Come on down.
It's tricky with legal books.
Come on down. You know how that routine here, say your name and your address for the record.
I'm Sylvia Call, and I'm at three twenty-seven North Main Street. I shared a little bit of information during one of the meetings last time about the possibility of upgrading a playground or constructing a new playground. We just don't have a lot of options out there that are inclusive for kiddos with special needs, there's just not a lot. I recently attended a CORE meeting, and CORE stands for Children Offered Resources Early, so that's comprised, it's, it's in every county in the state of Ohio, it's a mandatory organization. Mr. Denon was actually at the meeting too, it was very exciting. But it's comprised of people from both school districts, it's comprised of individuals from Help Me Grow, from the Board of DD, Job and Family Services. So they get together quarterly and talk about some of the things going on in the community, and the, the previous meeting, which was in May. One of the biggest topics of discussion was the lack of appropriate playground equipment for handicapped children. So this is a topic that's not just in my little realm, it's kind of community-wide, and it's, it's, they've got, and I brought a copy of their, their agenda. But they're talking about, you know, what's out there, what's available, what's open to community members, and there's, there's just not a lot, especially if you have a kiddo with special needs. I work for the Board of DD in the field of early intervention, so all of the little people that I serve all have special needs in one way or another. And there's just not a lot out there for those guys. So, I worked with a company called Landscape Structures. They've done playgrounds in Wilmington, they've done Cowling Park in London, they've done a lot of different playgrounds in our area. And they specialize in inclusive playground equipment. So, this, the first page of it, where it's got some of the price quotes included. This is kind of a reproduction of a part of the playground in London at Cowling Park. This is not their entire playground, they have a really nice playground system. But this is a chunk of it, and it includes different elements that would be accessible to kiddos with different needs. But it's also really fun for typically developing kids. So, Tony is our regional representative from Landscape Structures, and he put this together for me, so he's got the cost of the equipment, the cost of freight, labor. And if you want to include the turf, which he strongly encouraged, especially if you're wanting to make it handicap accessible. And then he forgot to include, so a lot of families that I work with are families of children on the autism spectrum. This is a communication board, it's based on the PECs system, so Pictorial Exchange Communication System. A lot of kids on the autism spectrum use this to communicate, and it's something that you can have in large size at a playground. So he did add that in later, so the cost of that is located under that picture, and it's not included in this main cost. I've got a lot of community members who are really invested in this project. Dr. Fitten, who's our town's only pediatrician, said, whatever it takes, let's do it. It's, it's crazy that we don't have something for these kiddos with special needs that we serve. Suzie Janisov is the Director of Early Intervention, she's on board with whatever we do. They're creating a preschool coalition in, in the subheading of CORE. And that's one of the, one of the pieces they wanna tackle. Obviously, there are a lot of things going on in our town in the realm of preschool that go beyond playgrounds, we just don't have a lot of preschools. So, the playground piece is one of the things that as, as a preschool coalition, we're gonna focus on, and I'm a, I'm a part of that board. But yeah, just really hoping to get some forward momentum, there's a lot of community backers who are interested and hoping to move forward. We've got a lot of cute little families who are interested and hoping to move forward, my own included. So yeah, that's what I brought. This is just information, I did not create this, but this is, this is a good kind of getting started packet, and has lots of good information. There are lots of grants out there, especially if you're looking to make something ADA or handicap accessible. So just really hoping to get the ball rolling and get some, get some structures out there that will serve all of our kids, not just a few.
Very good. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it, and those who came to support you.
Yeah, this is my little friend Blake, Blake is a graduate of our EI program. Hi Blake. What's going on buddy? Blake's also my neighbor, so we're hoping that we can kind of walk on down to. Yeah, we've got more neighbors in the hallway who are here to, yeah.
You can step in if you want to. See who's out there.
Yeah, so.
Anyway, thank you Sylvia.
Thank you.
And thank you to others for being here.
Yeah.
We obviously are going to look into this.
Sounds good.
Do you have a ground or area you would like to look into?
So he gave the, the measurements on the front sheet. So for this structure, this area, it would be ninety by fifty to fit all of the equipment that he's got included here. My initial, and this is just me being selfish, because we live over by Iman Park. My initial thought was the piece over, so this flashpad is on the other side of Iman Park, and there's kind of a, there's a swing set and a spinning device that really doesn't spin. I, that, that's kind of my thought, but at the same time, I'm also, that's me being greedy, because we can walk over there with my kids. I'm open to wherever, I just think it would be great to have it somewhere accessible to families.
But what I was thinking about, somewhere accessible to a, a bathroom type thing.
Yes, and that's included in their packet, you need to make sure, and that's, that's something that CORE talked about, we need to have public restroom accessibility.
Special type of.
Yeah.
And the thing I think about is out there at the Y, because they have that nice building sitting there that we helped build, and it probably has bathrooms in it, doesn't it? So that building.
Yeah.
Yes.
There is bathrooms, and it could be moved around, for handicapped children, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And it's a nice building.
Yeah.
It could be unlocked during the day and locked up at night, and you would have less vandalism out that direction.
My only hesitation is that it's not walkable, but I, yeah, I agree with.
Trails put in.
Right.
There you go Sean. There's a plug for you, he's working on that.
I know, I know, we're getting it, right? Yeah.
But it is a little bit of a distance.
Yeah, but.
But it is a nice new building sitting there, not being utilized.
Yeah. The only other thing that he didn't include in this quote, and it really depends on where you're putting it, if you're putting it up by the Y, not as much of an issue, but fencing. And that's one of the things that CORE is looking at as well, just, we need a fenced-in area to just make it safe for kiddos.
Yeah, Sylvia had mentioned a concern about. You know, some young kids, they're playing, they're having a good time, and a parent can be very attentive, but they, sometimes, you know, wander off. Or they move a lot faster than you do. And a lot of the areas are relatively close to water.
Yes, water at the park.
So. You have more than enough physical space over by the splash pad.
It is fenced in.
Yeah, so that would be a potential option, now you know, that does limit you to kind of seasonal use, but you know, in the middle of winter, I don't know how many people use playground equipment anyway. But there are some other areas that we could look at, that fencing can be, I mean, it's not cheap, but. Now, part of it was an aesthetic issue, and it's much taller than what you would need for this. Like that green-coated fencing we used around the locomotive and caboose, or we used it down at Dog Park too. That looks nice, it lasts very well, it is, for what it is, amazingly more expensive than it's really a challenge.
And you could put a bathroom down there, because there is plumbing all in that area.
Right, yeah, I think a bathroom would be definitely something, yeah, with these families, absolutely. But I, I do think the idea of a fence, I know kiddos on the autism spectrum are, it's just a thing, they elope, and they're fast. I have one of my own, and we've done a lot of therapy, and he's a pretty awesome little ten-year-old guy. But when he was two, man, he was fast, and I had a little sister on my hip, and it was hard to keep track of that guy. So we typically, if we went to the park, we would drive to Wilmington, because it is a little more enclosed and a little more accessible. So, yeah, I think just something to think about, and I'm hoping that we can get some momentum and see something happen.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for others who came. Okay, Sean, you're up.
Good evening, City Council. Now, I have some handouts, but I didn't know there was gonna be the projector. He's got that on PowerPoint, I don't know if we could project that up there, but you know, I could just hand these out.
Or I could just hand these out.
Or you could hand them out.
Why don't you just hand those out?
I was very excited to watch that. We saw it in council, it was enjoyable, first time I watched it, I really enjoyed seeing it, like movie night in there, it was, it really was. After attending councils for over a year now, on this issue, bike trail, it is, I've seen a lot. So I feel very inclined and involved in this community, and really seeing, finding out all the issues and exciting things coming this town's way.
So, Sean Remington, thirty-eight, fifty-three, November, six-two. Like I mentioned earlier, I've been tending city council for about thirteen months now. So the first issue that happened for me, Sylvia mentioned about her child, when she said ten, reminded me about the public issue safety that. I see on a daily basis, having my shop over here, but I witnessed with my ten-year-old daughter at the time, she's now thirteen. We parked over at the park, and we're gonna ride bikes, and wanted to get on the trail system, ride to the other park, and she almost got hit by a car. And I was asking everyone in this town, like, hey, why doesn't this trail connect? And they're like, ah, the railroad, they won't allow it, and, which made talking to the council committee members, just drew up a map. And said, well, you can't go through the railroad, looking what other towns have done, we, you can go around the railroad, and the railroad can't stop you if you're using the roads. So a lot of towns have used signage, paintage, and that's a package we presented to council, so, like we show here, this really shows the timeline over this year. And so we presented that on eight, ten, twenty-two. An initial map of presenting the route, and pictures showing what that would look like with the other routes around the trail. You know, paintage, signage, what that would look like. Council, in deliberate, talked about it, the next council meeting, Dale Lynch, you pointed me to go talk to the, to the property owners. This first map we proposed, none of the, it was all on city property. And, but we thought, instead of just having business centers still like, we're doing this, we should ask for permission. And everyone was on board, there was like five businesses, I think it was four businesses it would have crossed, so. So it pretty much was discussed in here, and then council was like, yeah, let's, let's move forward with this, so. Moving, so, you know, we were on eight, twenty-four, and then council decided in committee if we wanted to do this, if we wanted to pursue it. So the next step was getting the engineering and the survey. And really, it was just a survey, because we presented a map, and you know, did the, the heavy lifting on that, and it just needed to make sure that the property lines that the city had looked like the property lines. That took quite a period of time, it was four, five, to twenty-three, like seven months later before that came back. Now, backing up once I skipped here, on three, twenty-five, twenty-three, the city wanted to acquire the Patterson property to add to the Parks District, which was great. Great idea, as town expands, and Joe's been talking a lot about town expanding, this green space that's in town should stay green space, we shouldn't gobble up and try to develop and. this green space that's in town should stay green space. We shouldn't gobble up and try to develop and squeeze apartments everywhere. Town can expand outwards. A higher quality of life or green space is, in higher quality life in cities is more parks, more trails. So, um, the Patterson property, that was a hard, there was some hiccups with some of the things that the owner wasn't happy about, and, but with me and others, after talking with her for a period of some months, she agreed that that would be the best thing to use for that space and not have it developed. And so that was something we helped with, but, so coming on four, five, and twenty-three, the surveying was finally done, and we were so excited, and we're like, man, we're gonna, this is gonna go so quick, because it's really, a lot of it wasn't asphalt. Most of it was barriers, fencing, signs, uh, road painting. The, uh, the map that was presented, Joe presented to council, um, from the engineering firm, was, um, a nice trail. It was a, a path we looked at early on. The reason why we didn't present that path, because it was gonna take buying four parcels of land, and I thought, well, that'd be probably much harder to do. Um, so, uh, but we were like, great, great, that's, that's even better. Love that idea. And, you know, that was, we were at four, five, twenty-three. So, at, you know, as time, again, we, me and Michelle and others attended every, so, you know, again, even though this is taking a long time, I just have attended every, I, I might have set a record for amount of, I don't think, no one else in this room, and not knocking you on, that's a normal thing, I'm just obsessive, has gone over a year without missing one council meeting. So I really, just to me, just became a thing of obsession about like, no, I'm gonna keep coming even though this is taking a long time, just, just to, you know, I tell community members, it's like, governance is slow, it's very slow. You can't come to council and talk one time and expect to get it done. It's very grueling. So, um, but some of the things that community members have brought up was, um, this is why this is relevant, four, one. On the trail system, this was granted, um, a half a million dollars by OMDR for connecting two sections of the trail. We were talking about how courthouse is being the Mecca and the development here is because our central location. So the trail system, the state trail system, it's, they really want to get this connected. So the, the grant was pulled away after the timeline had passed, and, but, and normally that's really dings you and causes really bad point system where you're not gonna get it again, but because they wanted it so much, they were pretty much like, we'll hold it back, and if you apply again, high chance you get it. Well, that deadline passed on four, one, of twenty-three, so we would not be able to apply for that grant. And, um, but moving on, um, so, you know, again, we're, we go into six, nineteen, to twenty-three, and we're like, okay, so we all agreed that we're, you know, so we're gonna start the first trail, and there was discussion with me and Joe of like, I really felt like we need to go from Kroger's towards the park because it felt like a public safety issue. Like I said, across at the Veterans Way intersection, it's, I watch, my shop is right there, I watch people pay Frogger. You have a five-road intersection with two train crossings. Watching people bringing groceries on carts from Kroger's, watching people go back and forth, it is very hazardous. I watch sometimes, and there's a picture in here, the kids from Cherry Hill School being brought down that way, so, that in the meantime was like, but, you know, logistical things happen, so we were like, it moved forward that instead of going from Kroger's towards the edge of Patterson property, we were gonna go from the Lakeview from the park towards Kroger's. And we were waiting on that, and then, uh, Steve Lynch, or Schultz, excuse me, um, and Ted Hawkes suggested that I go and meet with, um, the engineers and, and some other people from the city. And I was really kind of surprised because I was handed, um, some drawings where they were gonna just put a circular path on the Patterson property that had no parking and didn't even connect to the park. And I was very confused how anybody would even, how could you even walk there to walk it safely? You couldn't even drive there to walk it. So talking with Ted, discussing, and, and the issue was said to me was like, well, there's a drainage issue here on the corner of the road, um, right there on Oakland, and, um, a lot of, anyone that goes down Oakland is very aware of the water damming there, and, and so with that discussion, it was like, well, if we're putting this trail through, we having excavating equipment gonna be on site, it probably makes sense to put a drain right there, and before, the, the railroad's always been the barrier with doing any kind of drainage there, but now that the city owns the Patterson property, there is a section to the creek. And so, um, it, but this came up in committee before council, and talking about doing an alternative drain, there is lots of concrete. For anyone that doesn't know, there has been a lot of fill put in there, but, um, for people that aren't even making concern about parks and stuff, I think getting the water drained off that road is pretty of high of importance, and, yeah, there is concrete there, but, you know, a large enough excavator would be able to get a pipe to, to the creek. And, and there's other opportunities to do immaterial wetland, you know, um, kind of things with it done with high water areas, mostly rocks and stuff. But, so moving on, so that's where we were sitting at at eight, twenty-three, and we were just going, okay, are we gonna get asphalt this year? Contractor was like, yeah, that's gonna be hard, you get late in the year, actually getting asphalt down this year, everyone's busy, I doubt that happens. Someone suggested, let's put gravel down in the meanwhile, um, and then we ready for next round. I was like, hey, that's great. A gravel path is better than nothing, you know, at least people will see movement on that. So, so that's what we were waiting on, it's like, yeah, at least there's a gravel path, so if anyone strode by, there's a cut that stops about where the water issue is. And then I get a call from some, um, people that told, mentioned to me, they go, do you see their paving over at the sewer plant? And so the sewer plant was a whole nother, um, trail session with another issue of, during the construction, the sewer plant had, the, the, the trail had to be stopped to put a pipe under the trail. When that was put back together, that section of the trail was lowered, and Hugh and others had mentioned like, now this section of the trail, that section of the trail is already underwater about three times a year. Now that section of the trail is probably gonna be over underwater about three times as much, because we've lowered about a hundred feet, much lower. And when I was told that, I was like, well, there probably, it was discussion was that was gonna get fixed, they were gonna raise that, because the culvert pipe is never put under, it just lowered the land. So when I went out there and looked at that, the land is exactly the same, nine hundred feet roughly of pavement, so that's du- over double the Patterson property, was paved, and now there's actually flowing water draining straight from the sewer plant over the trail. Water was flowing like a hose, like it wasn't just like wet, it was pouring over there. And you can see in the pictures we have that it's coming straight from the drain pipe. So where we're left at with this now is we're just like very confused. We've, again, we've had this thirteen months, we're doing this, and then we're not doing this, and we're doing something else, so I just really wanted to present this to council, give a timeline, because it gets very confusing, everyone gets very like, wait, what's going on? As I've talked to council, people would be talking about, and I run all you guys in the streets, you, everyone was kind of thinking something different would happen at any given different time. So I just really wanted to present this and say, where are we at? What is the timeline of the map that was presented, this full map? Is there dates setting like, okay, we're gonna have this done at this date, and this done at this date? Is where we have money allocated for last, for this fiscal year for this trail? How much money is left? How much money's been spent on this so far? What money is guestimated it's gonna take to finish this? So that's where we're left at, and, um, yeah, that's what we want to present. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions or?
Joe, do you want to comment? Or not?
Service I thought did very well when they were presented with a number of changing issues. The trail issue of wastewater treatment, we will take care of that. But you get locked into what was approved with that original project. And some of that figures into the flood calculations for the improvements you made at the plant. And some of it relates to the issue that I talked to you earlier about your lightning strike and the generator issue. What I have found particularly bizarre and high frustrating is the number of times that we changed directions. You know, originally, we would have completed it last year, we had a nice trail project, and you can argue that it didn't further the connection issue to that Shaw wetlands out there that gets quite a bit of use. But we changed that, um, I think the phrase that Sean used was more bang for your buck, public safety issue.
It, I visit, I ride the Chillicothe, I've been attending, I don't know if anyone's aware, the Ross County trail was almost in danger of shutting down because it was neglected for twenty years. It had quite a few wash-ups. The park, Ross County Parks Department was actually proposing shutting it down. So we, we've talked about the investment of what's coming to this town. Uh, there's been studies done, for every dollar spent on trails and parks, there's a seven to twenty-dollar investment in downtown. So by connecting our trail fully, where someone could ride a bike from Cincinnati to Chillicothe, that is a huge economic opportunity to capture people to stay the night, shop, eat. You know, that is, it's more than, there's a thing for the local, but there's also a massive thing for an economy and on the larger scale. So, so to the comment about the, the water going over, it's been paved twice. It was paved the first time when it was shut down, and it was said that a pipe was gonna be put underneath there, a culvert pipe. It was just lowered, and it was paved there, and then it was paved again, and so I don't know why a pipe would be, a minimum be put underneath there. Right now, besides in the wintertime, like, let's say November and stuff, that's gonna be complete slip hazard, and if you see in the picture, there's people riding through right there, and it smelled like rotten eggs really bad. The water smelled really bad. But even when, uh, when trails are kept wet like that, besides ice, they'll, they grow algae, become very slippery. So it seems like a, it created a hazard issue, and I don't understand, like, if a contractor's there doing pavement, nine hundred feet of pavement, how hard would it have been to cut a pipe, at least put one eight-inch pipe under there? That would have harmed that water flow. So I'm just, it's very confusing on the, like, why, why was the purpose of paving nine hundred feet of that section of trail? And where did the funds come from? Was that from the bike funds that we used?
No.
Where, what was that? What, what was the reason of paving that?
Part of the wastewater treatment project to put that out, uh, you had to restore the area that was there. But the elevation is different, yeah.
Yeah, but the trail, the nine hundred feet, that had nothing to do with restoring that area. I mean, that, none of that trail was touched, except for the, like, section that was shut down for a period of time, but that was about distance, about a hundred feet that was lowered. Again, nine hundred feet. So, I mean, I'm always happy to say nice new trail, it's, it's a, it's a beautiful trail, but again, bang for buck, we missed out, now people are still gonna be scooting across, you know, what, we're talking about shutting down, how busy Temple Street is gonna be when this construction happens on the main drag with all the people. This is, and, and, and the lady at the car lot there, when I talked to her, she said she saw a gentleman in a wheelchair get hit one time, and he fell over, the car took off, another pedestrian helped stood him up, and the cops never came because he just left. So, I mean, there was a gentleman that was, uh, a car, you know, we were with the railroad, and the railroad was doing a crossing, but what I'm getting at is, how long until somebody's hit and killed, and we were like, how did this happen? We should have did something about this. And so that's my point, is like, we're just kind of keep, it, it seems to me would be a major, major, major issue. If you polled the town on, hey, is anyone really, and, and everyone I've ever talked to, like, we're trying to get this done, that would be great. That would, man, we've been wanting to get this for twenty years. That would be fantastic. So that's what I'm getting at. It seems like it's just like a minor thing of like, you know, it, it, it's, it's a big deal. It's a really big deal, because it's a public safety issue, number one. Number two, it's for the recreation to be able to go from one, a party. We are literally in a situation with all the money that was invested in the splash pad. If you're a child born on the wrong side of the tracks, you cannot walk to the splash pad safely. You have to be driven there, or you have to run across the railroad tracks. So that is the confusion of we've invested all this money on that side of the parks, which is not connect to a trail system. We need it connected. It, again, what we proposed, why we proposed that way with proper signage, barriers, it would cost very little. And other towns have done it, we've shown pictures of it. I love the other way, but the thing about the other way is, again, it's more obstacles. Now, we gotta buy more property, it's way more asphalt. It's, you know, it's just something that could have been done, it already could have been done, you know, how many years are we gonna talk about? And again, people like Hugh, you know, people from the Tri-Montreal, I mean, Hugh would tell me, like, we've been trying to do this for twenty years, twenty years, and again, it was like, you can't fight the railroad, just go, go around. So I won't, I won't keep going on and on, but these were the questions I had, and, and budget, that is a real question, like, what is the trail budget? I mean, we, we came and lobbied for money.
Sean, it depends on if you want to include the purchase of the Patterson property. That would be my significant impact on that.
Well, that was a separate deal, because the city wanted to buy the Patterson property before we even got involved. We just helped getting a purchase. But, um, as far as the easements, because when, so we saved money because the, because if we went, if we hadn't gone to that meeting, I have very, not a doubt that one day we would have showed up and they would have been paving a circular trail, and the whole town would have been like, why in the world did we pave a circular trail around there? There was no parking, and there's no way to walk there. And it would have been like this big thing, so.
Are you talking about on six nineteen?
The address?
No, I'm seeing on your date, the circular trail.
Yeah, six nineteen.
Specifically on six nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-three, city consulted with an engineering firm, received a map of Patterson property only, with a trail circling it, leading to nowhere, and with no parking.
Yeah, it did not go to Lakeview. It stopped right where, if you look at the picture behind it, go ahead, sorry.
But I can tell you, I mean, we have a plan, and there is parking.
Where?
It's the bigger plan.
Yeah.
Well, well, so, so, yeah, and we, we talked about the capital project, but doing the straight line would not have taken away from doing the circle. So how knows long, I, I love the capital project, but how many years would that take? In the meanwhile, I say, well, we're gonna put this circle, because one day, we're gonna, which again, I love what was proposed. I think it's a fantastic idea, but how many years will that take when we could have had this now? And so that's what I would just say about that, is it did, it didn't go anywhere. It stopped right at that corner. Didn't even go to Lakeview. It stopped just short of it.
But Sean, I would say, look, and you know that I support the trails. There's a delicate balance between getting it done right and getting it done right now, alright? And so at some point, we paved some section of, of trail, and then we have the problem with flooding over the trail that you brought up.
Yes, I've seen.
So, you know, it, you talk about how this is a slow process, I would rephrase that and say, this is a meticulous, it should be a meticulous pro- process, where we are taking our time and making sure that we're doing it right. And I wanna get it done, but I always caution people because I can't get their hopes up that this will be done like tomorrow. But we are working on it, and I, I think we've been fairly receptive.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think so, but there's a difference between council being receptive and saying, yes, we're doing this, and then it doesn't happen, something really different happens.
Okay, okay. You, you've repeated all the things that we've heard many times.
Yes.
And I appreciate that, and we're all in favor, I don't know anybody that's not in favor of the trail. But unfortunately, in city government, there are a lot of things that come up, and that's why sometimes things get slowed down. And I understand your frustration. I do.
It was more logistics of like paving nine hundred feet.
But we've had to make all kinds of changes which caused a lot of money and a lot of time.
We asked for.
I know.
Yeah.
But there are other people besides you who have looked at this.
Yeah, yeah, no, we did.
And so we had plans drawn, and we were ready to move, and then you came in with people, and you changed things.
Pardon me, that actually wasn't us. That was portrayed as us, and that was not us.
Well, okay, but...
And I like the other idea, but again, I said to everyone, I was like, guys, that's a great idea. We proposed it first, and again, it's a much harder, hard to get paid. The, the way we proposed would have... The, the way we proposed would have not taken away from anything. It would have just been very efficient. And the thing that I'm, and, and yes, Caleb, governance, we talk about this very slow. And I've always come here and I've always tell people to be respectful and listen, but the thing is, is the paving the nine hundred feet of trail that didn't need paved was just the whoa, logistically, put, not putting a pipe under there, running water over top of the trail is like shocking. So, but I'll end with that. I'll end, thank you, council, for your time.
Okay, wait a minute.
Where's Bron?
Who?
Bron, if he's with us.
I don't know.
I don't want to stand or sit.
He's lucky for Ronso.
Probably standing outside talking.
He's probably out.
The nine hundred feet of trail, Sean.
Do you know where to go?
That was a grant project. Well, we identified that for resurfacing. That's why you got the nine hundred square feet. That's not our money. It didn't affect the trail budget at all.
What grant was that? What was the, because we asked about funding for grants.
See, that was, oh, we identified it, um, shoot. That qualified for, that work was done down there. That was, uh, I'll give me five seconds here to think, Sean. I'm drawing a blank.
So that was my concern is that we still know, you know, that it said it was paid for a grant, but you don't know the name of the grant.
Okay, that's not fair. I'm, I'm going to be very honest. That's not fair. This man runs a city and it's not just a trail.
I just.
And I support everything that you guys do, but I feel like tonight you're not being fair and I can't be quiet anymore. We are busting our butt trying to do that. Every one of us have other responsibilities. It doesn't work like you owning your own business. It doesn't work like that. I own my own business and I know I can do things a lot quicker. But I feel like as a group, we have supported this a hundred percent. I would love nothing better than to see this process happen. But I think you need to be a little bit more patient and a little bit more understanding. Money can't move from one fund to another in the city like it can in a personal business. So if it's grant money that was allocated for a project at the water treatment plant, that's how it has to be used. It can't just go over to the city park because it, it's grant money. So I just don't feel like you're being fair.
I, did I, and I.
So I think you need to allow Joe to answer you when he researches it. And I, I mean, we've got a long meeting ahead of us and I think we've heard this stuff over and over again. No one here does not support you.
And I, and I see.
Okay, so.
It's not like one time you come in and just like falling off. Like, I've been here thirteen months. Like, I, I come to council, you know.
Right. But even, even Sean, I'm going to say that you said you were the only one who's been here. We are entitled to take a vacation.
No, 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 no.
Well, it just.
Okay, wait a minute. Wait, stop, tie, hold it. That's it. That's it. Have a seat. We're moving on.
It felt like a. I'm done. Yes, please.
We talked and I asked you to be, uh, quick and you weren't. And so we're moving on. Uh, Mr. Kestner Key, you're up.
Jerry Kestner Key, thirteen eleven Farmington Lane, Washington Courthouse. I just have a couple of things. Um, we had talked, I wanted to ask something, Joe. The, uh, and I'm sure that, you know, you've seen these radar signs. Do those do anything more than just flights of speed? Or are they doing any recording of people?
They do recording. That's why they're out there.
Okay.
So we can take a traffic count and, uh, have McCarty and Associates do a traffic study for it.
Okay, great, because I was kind of curious about that. Otherwise, because I think a lot of the people that are now trying to see how fast, how high they can get it when they run down the roads nowadays. Now it's going back the other way.
Oh, it took me a moment. CBDG.
There you go.
What's that?
That's the.
The grant people.
Oh. Community Development Block.
Write that down real quick. We don't forget.
I have OPWC stuck in my head. I'm so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kestner. Go on.
I understand. I go through that a lot myself too. So, like, why am I in this room now? Okay. Anyway, I was just curious about that. See, that was part of the testing, studying stuff because, uh.
Because that gives us a traffic count too.
Yeah. Okay, good. That's what I wanted to say. And also, there was some confusion and I've asked before and I never really found out exactly when, but when thirty-five was built and going around there. But I think that wonderful thing, the internet, you can go on there and find almost everything. I found out from, uh, that a history of US thirty-five in Washington, Ohio, in Washington, in Fayette County, uh, that around the Washington Courthouse bypass was completed in nineteen seventy-four. That's when they put the highway in from Palmer Road and I don't know how far it down it went, but that's where it was at. So there's been that many years to be, you know, be done there. So there's been a lot of stuff. Now, I did break a law or, so I walked up on the property, uh, around there to see how much had been taken away from behind all the other houses and all the trees had been taken down. But at one corner there, it looked like there was a red brick house. Either dumped there or it was built there and buried there, but it's, there's red bricks over the whole area there. It was, had to be enough of a house. It's, there is big chunks of concrete there. So you can't tell me that wasn't a dump site. I don't know, I don't know for sure where that came from or when it came there, but it is there. So, and we've had a lot of, uh, work going on up there with the different people coming out and doing soil tests. So I don't know what's, it's going to be interesting to see what is really underneath there and find out what's going on. So. But that's just, I just want to let everybody know that that wonderful thing of the internet, you can find anything if you need to. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Uh-oh, Mrs. Kestner Key's up now.
I'm not as entertaining as you.
Not as entertaining.
My name is Dela Kestner Key. I live at one three one one Farmington, um, Lane, Washington Courthouse, Ohio. I am presenting to you all tonight the petition we have had already mounted on neighborhood. Um, I have a hundred and thirty-three signatures on here and I would like to read this petition and then I'm going to give it to Mr. Lynch. And I first want to thank you all for letting me speak, but it will be quick. Uh, we believe that property owners who live in the vicinity of the proposed development of the vacant land owned by JLB One Properties LTD at the end of Farmington Lane, currently zoned as R three, are opposed to the building of a multifamily, multi-level apartment complex. The surrounding residential property on both Farmington Lane and Greenview Lane is zoned either R one B or R one A. And building a multifamily, multi-level apartment complex, um, would and will not be harmonious with the existing character of the current area. The current streets cannot, the current streets cannot adequately support the traffic of the potential size of an apartment complex. The proposed structure will be a detriment to the economic welfare of the community. Lastly, the designated vehicle approaches to the proposed development will interfere with the current traffic, um, and add additional noise to our community. We are not opposed to this land being developed, but request that the buildings constructed be single level residential units that would be compatible with the adjacent properties, um, residential property. We believe building a multi-level, multifamily apartment complex would be incompatible with the surrounding zoning and would have an adverse impact upon the surprising residential properties. Um, I know you've heard this all before, so I, I'm, I'm really just done. But we do have every street in Quail Run is represented on this petition. And I know for a while, everybody's been saying it's just Farmington Lane that has the issue. It really is not just Farmington Lane. And actually, I had people that came across the other side of forty-one that wanted to sign the petition. They had heard about it. Because they're, just as I've said as well, and I said, no, this issue is, is Quail Run. We, we can do this. Um, I, I can't, Mr., you know, Mr. Bishop will not, he won't carry on a conversation. He's not interested in trying to figure or work anything out. But this is going to be a real problem down the road if, if these apartments go in. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dela.
Can you offer me a pair of copies?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Some people sign like Mr. Downing, our fire chief. Read some of those, Dela. Anyway, uh, Ms. Enchutes, you're up.
Good evening. I'm a first timer. I don't have near the experience that some of these folks do.
That's okay. You just need to say your name and your address.
Jill Anne Enchutes, five thirty-one West Elm Street, Washington Courthouse. Um, I'm here tonight. I work with the local fire truck dealership, All American Fire Equipment, out on Route twenty-two. And today, while I was at work, I was made aware that, um, through rumor, that there was going to be a, a vote tonight on a, a purchase of a tanker truck for the C- City of Washington Courthouse. Um, the gentleman, I am not in sales. I'm an operations manager for them, so I don't have all the sales details and everything. But, uh, the salesmen were talking and they said that they had come to the understanding that the fire department was recommending purchase of a fire apparatus from Johnson's, uh, which is a Spartan fire engine is, or tanker truck is what you guys are looking for. Um, the next thing that had come to light was that the purchase price of that, that they were rumored was that it was seventy thousand dollars more than the bid that Rosenbauer and All American had supplied to the city for that same spec truck. Um, that to me as a citizen was rather concerning. Now, tonight, as I've sat here and, and heard the amount of that bid being one million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, I believe, um, I'm even a little more concerned because that number then is closer to one hundred thousand dollars more than the bid that was submitted by All American and Rosenbauer. So I'm looking for some answers as to why we would spend that much more for a spec fire truck. Uh, in addition to that, Johnson's closest service center is fifty-nine point nine miles away from here. That means that any service that needs to be done to that apparatus is going to take that apparatus out of service. For travel times, going to take two firefighters generally to transport that apparatus down to their well-stocked service center. Um, the fuel to transport those apparatus when All American Service Center is five miles outside of town. So I'm just looking for some answers as to why we're making this decision and why we're spending this extra money. And for the, the cost of ownership on that vehicle over many, many years, because fire apparatuses last to stay a long time. Um, they have quite a few apparatuses from All American in Rosenbauer currently. Then what is the cost of ownership of that when you're traveling that far for service and things of that nature as well? I have, uh, the purchase order. Do you guys, I guess maybe my next question is, do you guys, did you even see the bids associated with all of those?
Yes.
So you don't need a copy of this?
I'd, I'd like to have a copy.
All right. It's also about the financing. I know you mentioned, uh, the financing options. Uh, the salesman had provided me with that. Obviously, that was back from July twenty-eighth, so those interest rates may, probably with today's economy, be a lot worse than that now.
I, I too would like a copy, please, if you have an.
I do not have a copy. I assume you all have.
I'll have to share.
That you all have that, but I can certainly.
I'll get you a copy.
I was going to say, I can certainly get you guys copies if you need. Um, this is just as well the amount of distance to the service facility for Johnson's Fire and the travel distance to All American Fire.
Mr. Downing, do you want to answer?
Yeah, I'd like. The reason we chose the Spartan is because they actually met all of the standards that we were requesting right off the bat. Their first design was the actual design that our gentlemen, who have over five hundred volunteer hours into designing this truck. We have a committee. I thought that Captain Callie, he's the lead of the committee, uh, that we have, putting this truck together, trying to figure out what is best for our community. The Spartan is the most closely designed vehicle to the current tanker. It has the best capabilities out of all the trucks, out of the five vendors that were looked at, not just two, but five vendors that were looked at. So we looked at Sudfin, Spencer, Pierce, which we're placing a Pierce, by the way, that Pierce has lasted thirty years. We looked at All American and Rosenbauer and the Spartan. The Spartan is an American-made vehicle. Yes, the place is in Wellston. They will travel here to work on the truck. We don't have to send it to them. They're more than happy to come here to work on the truck.
What is the cost for that, sir?
On warranty? No, they're not concerned with how the warranty.
So you're not required to take the vehicle to the service center?
May I speak?
Well, yes.
I'm sorry.
This is that kind of night.
It is. I'm sorry. I just want to be able to clarify the reason, the rationale for this truck. Like I said, the committee worked together very diligently to put together the proper vehicle for this community. Okay? Uh, the Rosenbauer's that we currently have, we have a tower truck that when it came to us had many problems. It is now, after many years of work, working properly. In February, as you probably recall, we did buy a vehicle from Rosenbauer, from All American. We had to purchase that truck because the tanker we currently have, the frame cracked. So we made an emergency purchase to have a backup engine. Within a pub, within about two weeks, the Rosenbauer Engine one thirty-five went out of service and it's been out of service since. It is currently, I believe, in Minnesota. Is that correct?
It is. Is it, it is actually being.
Rosenbauer, the parent company, is actually taking good care of the truck and trying to get it back in service as fast as it has not been in service since February. The current truck that we purchased is indeed working, working well. It was a ra- a very rapid purchase, not exactly a spec-ed out vehicle. My crew had to put the shelving, they made their own shelving for this truck. They put their, their own mounts in this truck. They did their work to get this truck in service as quickly as possible, make it work for us. The Spartan, right off the bat, was the best build, the best design. The issues with Rosenbauer's design, they fell short on many, in many ways, and they were given multiple chances. They came back with, I believe, was it seven designs? Seven designs, none of which meant the specs. Specs meaning that we, if you don't have the right compartment sizes, as simple as this, as simple as if you don't have the right compartment sizes, our equipment won't fit properly into this truck. We're trying to save money over time by reutilizing the equipment we currently have. If our equipment doesn't fit in the truck, then we have to buy the equipment from somebody. We were told by the salespeople from Rosenbauer that they would like to, if we were to buy their vehicle, they would like us to add on another hundred thousand dollars for loose equipment. We don't want to have to do that. We want to purchase a truck that's going to last thirty years. That's going to utilize most of the equipment that we have. As with anything new, we will have to buy some new equipment. That's just part of the process of building these trucks. That's part of what happens in a farship. Things do get old, do get broken, need to be replaced. But this particular truck, this Spartan, based on everything that our group has done, our community has done, will be the best course of action for this, for this community, for this fire department, this community. It should be, of course, we can't make promises, but it should be a thirty-year truck. We purchased an E-one, which All American used to sell E-ones at one time. We purchased the E-one. It did not make it fifteen years before it finally broke down and could not be repaired anymore. Uh, we've had All American equipment in our, in our house, in our firehouse for years. Uh, if you want to argue that we don't buy local, the only vehicle in our department currently that has not been bought locally is the Pierce that after thirty years, the frame cracked. This Spartan will be the first vehicle that we have not bought locally in a very long time, in over thirty years. Uh, the Spartan is a Spartan chassis. It's the same exact chassis that the tower truck has. So it's less confusion between people moving from one truck to the next. It's exactly the same chassis, the same cap. It's a perfect fit for this department. It's a perfect fit for this community. It is the best truck that we can get that's going to do the job that we need to do. It's not, and this team of people that Casey was leading in the, in the process, they started, I said, build the Cadillac. Build the truck that's going to last thirty years and give you everything you could possibly need and or want. So they did. They said, now, tear it apart and figure out what you have to have. And let's go with what you have to have. So they did. They took what they had to have, designed that. And this wasn't something that was just overnight. They, let's say, they've done ours since four years. You all know, we've been trying to get a grant. Uh, I've been talking to Jocelyn, then the human fire chief said, look, this, this tanker's. getting old. The fire engine lasted twenty years ago. We made this thing last thirty years because it was spec. It's ran great. These guys have been putting in the effort. I believe it was about a year and a half ago or so, they handed me a letter to give the, to give to Mr. Downing and said, hey, this is the truck that we think is the best. This was before they even knew pricing. They said, this is the one that we think is going to be the best. And then they still worked with everybody and gave everybody the consideration even after that because we had time. We were waiting on a grant. So they still worked with All American, and that's when they even say, special, let's bring you in and look at what you have to offer. Now, they still worked with them. They even went back and looked at Pierce again in recent months and said, let's look at the Pierce again and see what they can do. You know, can they make this happen? No. Even after all that time and effort that these guys put in, and what were there, sixty on that program, on that committee? Five, five people on the committee that put in all these hours and time and still came back and said, no, we stand by what we said earlier. So the last thing I handed Joe as far as a letter was the same letter that they gave me to begin with, that the Spartan was the best choice. And I backed them. They're the ones who have to depend on this truck. That Rosenbauer one thirty-five that's out of service currently went out during a structural firefight with two firefighters on a hand line and they lost water. I take it personally. Sorry, I am a little emotional about that. But when my guys are put in danger because of a failure of equipment, I take it personally. Rosenbauer has known since about five days, thirteen, five to thirteen days after the Rosenbauer one thirty-five was purchased, they knew that it had pump issues. We tested Johnson Control, or Johnson Control, we tested Johnson Fire Equipment with their ability to do service to, hey, let's see what they have. Let's let them do our pump test for us one year. During the pump test, engine one thirty-five, the Rosenbauer failed. Joe was there when it happened. So this truck went down on us during a pump test. That truck has not lasted a full year without having a failure. That's why Rosenbauer, all these years later, not All American, but Rosenbauer, all these years later, said, hey, we're gonna take that back. We're going to fix that truck for you because they know that we have a, we have a proven track record. It has been to All American over and over again for repairs that have not been completed, that have not fixed the problem. It's put my people in danger and we have it all documented. So to the point with this Rosenbauer truck, I have no problem with the badging on the vehicle. Every now and then you get a lunge. I'm okay with that. The Rosenbauer we just purchased, it's, it's a workhorse. It's doing great. The tower, after the bugs worked out of it, it's a workhorse. It works great. I don't care what badging you put on, but I do not wish to be attacked on Facebook or anywhere else telling me that we're doing something wrong by choosing the best truck for this community. So that, anybody else have an answer? Or was it?
Okay.
I think that's all I got. Thank you.
I would like to respond to a couple of those statements.
Please do it quickly.
I'm trying to help.
Okay.
Um, one is obviously, yes, he talks about the truck that had some issues, and it has had issues from day one, and it was All American that worked with Rosenbauer and encouraged them that they needed to do something with this truck because it was a danger, um, and that's why it went back out. That truck, while it is out of service, you guys have a truck that has been provided to this city by Rosenbauer, and it is of no cost to this city. Um, so the, this tr- the city has not been without a truck during that time. Uh, they have been covered for that situation. Um, the one hundred thousand dollar difference in the prices of these trucks could buy the equipment that they need to put in these compartments, and in addition to that, would probably be newer, safer, more compliant equipment. So that's something to consider as well. Um, I do respect all of these firemen. I've worked with all of them quite some time, but as a taxpayer in this community, I was pretty ticked off when I saw those amounts today and was like, why would we be so fiscally irresponsible with taxpayers' money? Because that's the way it seems to me. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Seriously. It's okay. It's okay to have discussions, to have discussions. It is.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Um, if Jill and/or anybody else from All American want to come in and talk to me about it, I'd be happy to do that. With that said, uh, the fire department invested a great deal of effort in the conclusions that they drew and worked very hard to pursue alternative funding. So characterizing fires desire course of action as fiscally irresponsible, I don't particularly care for and don't find to be particularly accurate. Uh, the one thing that I will say, uh, there has been some problems with some pieces of Rosenbauer fire apparatus. And, uh, with very amount of work from fire and All American and different folks involved, uh, they have worked to address that, which I think is a very admirable thing. But you ought to get a, you ought to get what you bought, and they have worked very hard to do that. Uh, but if Jill, if you want to come in and talk to me about it, be happy to do that.
I will call and make an appointment with you, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Barnhill, you're up.
Twenty-five things here. Reason I'm here is continued concern about the proposed multifamily development of seventy-two apartments at the end of Farmington Lane. As you all may be aware, and, uh, Tim Christman, I think, was the only one on council at the time, in two thousand, when that was Zone B three, and I would presume with an exit to Leesburg Avenue, it was changed to R three. And it was adjacent to and connected to an existing Quail Run subdivision, which was pretty much developed or getting there. I don't remember the exact date, twenty-three years ago. And Farmington Lane was being built at that time. And so, in my opinion, the change at that time was irresponsible to put a high-density apartment complex as now proposed, seventy-two units, adjoining to and connecting through an R one A and R one B, ten thousand and fifteen thousand. So you're talking thirty-six hundred square foot per dwelling, and you're talking at the standard highway rate of, it would be four hundred and ninety additional cars going up and down Farmington Lane or around Greensboro. In addition, you've got Andrick Drive, it's sixty-three lots being built there and using standards for number of trips that people typically make, services such as mail, trash pickup, home repairs, all that is ten per dwelling on the apartments at seven. So that's an additional six hundred and thirty, uh, traffic, uh, trips on Andrick Drive, all emptying out on the hot Highland Avenue, which has eight collector streets and a half a mile. That's one intersection every three hundred feet or so. And they're not lined up. They're here and there. So when you go down Highland Avenue, if somebody wants to make a left turn, it can back up traffic through one or two intersections. You know, if you come out of Farmington Lane and wanna make a right turn, you're gonna have to wait your turn because if somebody's making a left turn down the street three hundred feet, you're gonna have to wait. So really needs to be serious concern about traffic flow in that area. It, in driving Clinton Avenue and Leesburg Avenue, I find Highland Avenue, Tuesday River forty-one, to be much more congested presently, and when you add this additional development. And I've been concerned about the fact that it appears that there's a, on a railroad to getting this approved, that the developer has been told that this is fine, seventy-two apartments, that's thirty-six hundred square foot per unit, without considering the nature of the existing area, which is clearly stated in your code on R threes. So I just hope that the word gets down, I know you've said multiple times, your hands are tied, and I think Mr. Johnson said last time I was here that we're a mob and he's here to protect the developer, but we're not a mob. We're just a lot of concerned property owners. There's between eighty and a hundred million dollars adjusted in residential property at Quail Run. And if you own property there, you're concerned about the value. And when zoning isn't properly applied to protect everybody, not just the developer, but also the people who live there, there's something very wrong. And that's what we're concerned about, and many others in Quail Run. I've yet to come across anyone that agrees with this being done. Now, whether it gets done or not, or find an exit along the west side of Walmart, along thirty-five, or the east side, that would make a big difference in reducing the amount of flow. So I thank you for your time and, uh, hope you consider this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have some legislation to deal with. And first is that legislation which has previously been introduced. First is ordinance number seven, twenty-twenty-three. It is third reading.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance seven, twenty-twenty-three on a third reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number seven dash two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance accepting annexation on application of owners and establishing original zoning districts of fifty point ninety acres.
Move for passage.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. New legislation, ordinance number eight, twenty-twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move. We put ordinance eight, twenty-twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number eight dash two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, or his designee to abate nuisance, to abate public nuisance at eleven oh seven East Page Street, authorizing a pri- private contract for payment of the abatement of nuisance and directing the collecting of the cost of the abatement of nuisance from the owner of the property.
Ordinance number nine, twenty-twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move and place ordinance number nine, twenty-twenty-three on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number nine dash two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, or his designee to abate public nuisance at twelve thirty-one Washington Avenue, authorizing a private contract for payment of the abatement of nuisance and directing the collecting of the cost of the abatement of nuisance from the owner of the property.
Ordinance number ten, twenty-twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move. We put ordinance number ten, twenty-twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number ten dash two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, or his designee to abate public nuisance at eight seventeen Lakeview Avenue, authorizing a private contract for payment of the abatement of nuisance and directing the collecting of the cost of the abatement of nuisance from the owner of the property.
And resolution number R thirty-nine, twenty-twenty-three, first reading.
I'll make a motion for resolution number R thirty-nine, twenty-twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Resolution number R forty, twenty-twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move. We put resolution R forty, twenty-twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion? Okay. Uh, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Johnson Emergency Vehicle Solutions for the purchase of a Spartan fire apparatus for the fire department and authorizing the execution of financing arrangements.
Resolution number R forty-one, twenty-twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move. We put resolution R forty-one, twenty-twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
Go ahead. Give it to Ted.
Ted.
Got it.
Uh, discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-one dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager and/or the city service director of the City of Washington Courthouse to prepare and submit an application to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission, state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required to Market Street Improvements Phase One.
Okay. We're too miscellaneous. I'm gonna ask the council members the same thing I asked people who were speaking tonight. Please be brief. Mr. Christman?
Oh, thank you. Thank everyone for coming. It's always an interesting thing. This was an exceptionally good, good, thank everyone for their opinions and, you know, and we all have differences and things we have to do, so. Anyway, thank you for coming. Don't forget us, come back and see us again. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Mr. Hawk?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Blair?
Uh, I was very impressed to hear that they had a disc golf tournament this past weekend with seventy-five participants. So the word's getting out that the disc golf is alive and well in Washington Courthouse.
Very good.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
Uh, I wanna thank everybody for coming and all their comments, which turned up some good points. I, I do appreciate everybody's comments and points. I have to say something about the Farmington Lane project. One thing everybody's forgetting, one important thing you gotta think about. Mr. Bishop can sell that property at any time, and if you have an outside, he gets so frustrated, he's like, I can just walk away from it, sell it for a profit, and one of these big companies come in. They don't care. Mr. Bishop lives here. He lives in our community, so he kinda understands where we come from. And, uh, if somebody else walks in, they may not understand that. So you gotta be careful what you wish for. It is, there is ways to work with what we've got. He is proposing a lot of green space out there, Mr. Bishop is. There's gonna be a pool, there's gonna be a recreation hall, room, building, and a lot of other things. He's also dropped two of the buildings that he was gonna put up, so it's actually gonna be a little smaller than what we anticipated. But I just want everybody to know he could sell at any time to another developer, and he's had three offers already on that piece of property out there. So we gotta be very careful what we're wishing for. But thank you all for coming and your comments, but thank you very much. That's all I got.
Mr. Hernandez?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Lynch, when I, uh, first started in government work, I was a page at the House of Representatives, and I was sitting and Representative Danny Buck, he was a colonel, so we called him Colonel Buck. He stood up on one of his last speeches, uh, and he said that brevity and likability are directly correlated, and that has always stuck with me. Uh, I normally would've ended on that.
So you're not likable tonight. I'm likable, you're not.
True. Well, why change things? Why change that? Yeah. That was one good quote, but I think that I was a little misquoted earlier. Um, I, I never said that I was here to protect the developer.
Right, no, you didn't.
I have never said that I am a shield to a developer. I just know that I cannot be the sword to the developer either. I just know that I cannot be the sword to the developer either. And so that's the position I'm in. So, thank you.
Okay. Being in city government is not easy. Being in any government position, elected position, is not easy. It's true. How much money you spend on things is important. And so you sometimes have to make decisions about, is something better even though it costs more? And I understand, I do understand it from a citizen's point of view. Nobody has asked those two guys to find some way out of Farmington Lane than I have. So far, we haven't come up with one. Um, anyway, it's, it's tough. And nobody on this council has ever opposed trails. We love the trails. But we have so many things that we have to deal with. And trails, for people who want trails, that's what you're focused on. We're focused on a thousand things. And so I would love to get the trails done. I would love to get the trails done. Okay, we are at this point, and we're gonna have to, I need a motion here in a minute. We are going into executive session to discuss matters of personnel. There will be no votes or other business, other than adjourning, that takes a vote, uh, when we come out of executive session. So, uh, there's no reason to hang around because other than adjourning, there won't be any votes that happen. So, having said that, does someone wanna make a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion to an executive session for matters of personnel.
I'll second that.
Okay, I think we need a vote for that. So Kelly, a roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk? Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Okay, we are in executive session as of nine twenty-three.
Mr. Lynch, I need about two minutes.
I do too.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. I was just gonna say, if you have to take a rest, a break now's the time.